I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we just came here tonight, God, and we're so grateful to be here. And I always say this, Lord, but I mean it with all my heart, I'm so grateful to be in Russell County in the school district where we just take care of our students, God. And I just thank you for this board tonight that's going to make some decisions that are going to affect our next school year, and I pray that you will give them wisdom and guidance, Lord, and that everything we do will just be in the best interest of our kids, God. Thank you for all of your blessings. Thank you again for this great district and for just everything you've done for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ammer. And you're certainly one of those that take care of those kids.
Yes.
If you just referenced in your prayer.
This time we call a meeting to order. Roll call?
Roll call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entry, present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Higginbotham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
All board members present.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
There's a meeting agenda provided for your review. If there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented. I'll talk about them, Mr. Kazook, when we get there, at least particular items. But on number 10 with the Senate Bill 181, I did note that in addition to Parent Square that we're recommending as our traceable communication on the staff note, if you want, because I just changed it this afternoon, that our district email also is one of the options that we can do. And then on the, on number 14, and I'll talk about it more when we get to that point, the renewal for property general liability and fleet insurance, I will, I'm going to recommend that we don't take any action tonight on that, and I'll talk some more about that when we get to that point. But as far as agenda items, there's nothing to change.
I make a motion we adopt agendas.
Second.
I second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, public comments.
At the risk of embarrassing her, I do want to wish Ms. Carroll a happy birthday. And I'm, yeah, there you go. Ms. Carroll, we do appreciate all you do, certainly for the board and for myself, but for our district, and we appreciate you very much.
We got new, we got new title quotes.
Yeah.
Anything else? If that one was gone, next item on the agenda is Cumberland Family Medical Center Incorporated School-Based Mobile Dental Program 2024-2025, completed treatments for Russell County schools.
These are just some numbers that are just pure informational, and they didn't even ask me to share them publicly or anything. But as we got them, I just thought it's good information to share with, with the board and to share it publicly. But the Cumberland Family Medical Center School-Based Mobile Dental Program completed the following treatment in Russell County schools during the 2024-2025 school year. So that's the school year that we're just finishing up. So 734 visits for preventative dental services, 77% of the students were diagnosed with one or more cavities. So that's where our kids in our school are being seen by dental team here actually in each of our schools. So we had that many that were diagnosed with a cavity, and 17 of the diagnosed with urgent needs included in the 77%. So urgent needs means that, hey, Michael's got a cavity, but it needs to be filled, it needs, or it needs to be extracted, you know, there's some greater need with that. So they call that with the urgent needs, and they call them restorative dental services. Forty-eight visits for restorative dental services, 53 fillings, one extraction, and eight dental treatment plans completed. So that's some services for some kids that, it's just good, it's, it's nice to be able to provide those services, appreciate Cumberland Family Medical doing that. And I also want to give another shout out to Faith Dentistry here in the, in the county, to where we still take some students to them, we discussed that previously, you know, put them on a bus, and, and it's more for pretty in-depth, you know, a little bit more care needed, and associates and eye care that were taking students there to, for vision exams and to get glasses if things is needed. Certainly both companies are utilizing insurance, medical cards if the, if the family and the child has them, and then Kevin Williams money takes care of those kids if not.
That's great.
And then we provide the bus, of course, and we discussed those at board meetings before. But Ms. Ammer mentioned in her prayer about taking care of kids, I think that's just some more good examples of how Russell County schools are taking care of kids with some great community partners that we have here to do that. So no action, just, just a little informational item there.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, paying the bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report.
Treasurer's report for the month of May 2025, balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $21,671,948.62. Receipts for the month were $2,545,379.76. The total receipts and beginning balance together, $24,217,328.38. Disbursements, $3,108,126.46, and that brought our balance at the close of the month to And fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $10,816,060.22. Special projects, Fund Two, negative $315,512.27. District Activity Fund Twenty-One, negative $209,997.93. Capital Outlay Fund Three Ten, $270,022, even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $160,984.14. Construction Fund, Fund Three Sixty, $9,585,442.85. Debt Service Fund, $400,000. Food Service Fund Fifty-One, $800,160.51. fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, $2,042.40. Total cash and bank for all the funds, $21,109,201.92. And in Fund Two, I just got the notice this morning, we are getting roughly $1.9 million in federal monies that we are owed back that's coming in the next couple of days, by the end of the week it will be here.
And also in June, all the additional payrolls will bring down that general fund balance, cleaning, cleaning that up, or not cleaning it up, but just paying out, finishing up the payroll for the fiscal year. Well, I guess we do need to, I guess you might want to, I'm sorry. There are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items. Sorry about that.
Motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is contracts, memorandum of agreement.
We have our Green River National Educational Cooperative membership intent for the 2025-26 school year, something you all see each year, our school-based clinic satellite agreement with Cumberland Family Medical, that's with the nurse practitioner that they have in our school system, and also the cost of our nurses that's covered in that. We have our annual with agreement with Education Labor Cabinet with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation for our community work-based transition program, our annual dual credit agreement with Somerset Community College for the 2025-26 school year. And then I know at the last board meeting, we had you approved Sherman Carter Barnhart Architect Agreement, and this, or you approved them to be the architect for the Russell County Marching Band Practice Area, and this, this is the contract for that. I'll also note too that myself, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Irvin met with architect, a couple of engineers, and trying to think who all was there in the meeting last week about the marching band project, had a very productive meeting, a lot of questions answered. Mr. Irvin was so very pleased and appreciative again of that opportunity, and so they hope to get some drawings finalized and get everything out price-wise. So I recommend approval of the contracts and/or memorandum of agreements that have been approved by the board attorney.
I'll make a motion in that effect.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I saw Donnie Morrison, and he sat beside the complex, that was one of the greatest things we ever done, was a band thing.
Oh, the marching band? I've had multiple people appreciative of the marching band practice area.
Next item on the agenda is 2025 Russell County Schools Policy and Procedures Update, first reading.
So Ms. Ammer is going to provide some highlights on some of the policies, you know, I sent these to you all last week earlier, head change, head start to review them. Ms. Ammer and I have already talked a little bit about the fact that a lot of times there'll be some discretionary policies or maybe some things, most of these are just really based upon legislation, you know, they're, they're required. Ms. Ammer?
Yes, I was going to say, this is my 11th summer with you all, so 10th policy update with you all. And I, yes, the first few times there was something to discuss, and this time there's really like, it's pretty much there, things, most things are either law, or there are things where they've changed a term, or the title of the program, or something where you're just changing wording to match whatever the statute says. Okay, so here's the Clinton notes version. There are a few things in chapters one and chapter two of our policy updates that are top, that allow for electronic signatures, talks about the board's role in supporting a schooling crisis, for example, if the site base were removed, and you all would vote for a team to go in and, I think it's called a turnaround team for that school. Some responsibilities about informing minors of their working conditions and place of employment, a few changes to show to school council policies that include addressing advanced coursework. And then we get to chapter three, which is the employment section that deal with classified and certified staff, and there, and there, there are a few policies that are required that deal with reporting requirements for sick leave accumulation, and then also a new policy for paid 30-day maternity leave for an employee who gives birth to a child. Also in that section, there's a little bit of relief given in the timelines for teacher evaluations and required trainings from the state, they've given a little bit of leeway for rotating schedule for some of those things. Between chapters three and eight, there's just a few wording changes in some things, and then in chapter eight, then we get into like curriculum, and that's, that's the part of the policy that deals with school coursework and some of those things. So in there, there's a reporting requirement that goes into effect next year to encourage the use of curriculum that meets state and federal guidelines. So Mr. Ford is a designated responsible for reporting that back to the state, what our curriculum, our core curriculum is that we're using. There are graduation requirements that have been tweaked to include a financial literacy course, as well as an option for a half-credit civic's course instead of taking a test. There's some changes to the early graduation pathway, and there's also for attendance, there's a little bit of an earlier admission for home hospital instruction if a student's admitted to a facility. So that's a positive thing for the district and for those facilities that do admit students and patients. In chapters nine, there's, which deal with students, there's the addition of a moment of silence that is now to be observed, more than one minute, not less than two minutes. So there are some mandates in there about promotion and retention regarding the first grade. When I saw that, I got a little nervous about like what they were going to mandate us to do, but then when I read it, I went, oh, that's exactly what we do anyway. So that did not faze a bit once I read what the requirements were about looking at the whole child, their reading scores and some of those things, and also ages and those kind of things. So did not, that, that was something, again, we were ahead of the game on. There's telecommunications, a policy, the tele, updated telecommunications policy, that there can be no cell phone used during instructional time unless it has something to do with the teacher lesson. But our middle school and high school have taken the lead on that, and they have banned cell phones, period, which has been a really positive thing for our discipline. So it's great, the way the students have been more engaged during that time. The big one, new policy, is from Senate Bill 181, traceable communications, and I have the pleasure of skipping that, and Mr. Ford's going to cover that in just a few minutes. So we'll come back to that. Some tweak, there's some tweaks to online and virtual school policies. Most of that doesn't really apply to us because the only thing we do that's non-seat time is we have a few Odyssey work classes that are called virtual or performance-based through Laker Success Academy. Most of our students are still on campus at some point, so we really don't run a virtual school. So there's some policies there that you're required to have just in case, but we, it really doesn't affect us in our actual practice. And then student medication policy is being updated because of what the law is going to require of that. Good news on that is, because we have a partnership with Cumberland Family Medical, they take care of all of those forms, and a doctor oversees that, and Ms. Nurse Patty, that's our district health nurse, has been in contact with them, and she's working on making sure.
But it only applies if the, if a, I think that's important for parents to understand and guardians, it only applies if the child is going to be receiving services with Cumberland Family Medical.
That is true.
So if, if, if the child is not with them, and it can no longer be that, hey, Johnny's got a headache, and yeah, tell the nurse to give him some Tylenol, that will no longer be allowed in absence of being signed up for services.
Sure. But they can do that on the spot if that needs to be done, so if that, that comes up.
We'll run into some of that.
And we do have that sometimes when a parent will say, hey, you know, I really didn't want them seen at school because I wanted them seeing my bio provider, but in this case, I'm fine with letting this nurse or whoever do that, so. And then there's a branding policy on sexual extortion that you are required to have. It pretty much just simply outlines the definitions of sexual extortion and kind of tells what the legal charges are for that. So it's more of a definition and what will happen, the consequences type policy. So I think that is the summary.
There is a physical copy at the board, I assume, and that each school has.
Of this?
Yes.
Yeah, it's online.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all online too.
It's online, yes, and we do actually retain a, a physical binder that stays updated at the board as well, yes.
Yeah. I figured.
And there's no requirement for action at this point. And then the, one of the procedures that, of course, you all just have to review procedures, but we'll talk about that with Senate Bill 181 as well that goes with the traceable communications.
Next item is Senate Bill 181, traceable communication system.
So this is a, a big deal, and as Ms. Ammer noticed, or noted in her presentation, that we have to have a policy that addresses, and the board has to designate the district's traceable communications system. So let me just read a little bit first. Senate Bill 181 passed during the most recent Kentucky legislative session, created a new statute, KRS 160.145, directing each local board of education to designate one or more programs or applications as a traceable communication system that all the exclusive means for district employees, coaches, and volunteers to communicate electronically with students. And I'll go through some more details, I'm just going to go through this on the staff note first. We've looked at several different options, but we are recommending Parent Square, Big Data Native for Russell County Schools, Traceable Communication System, and then I've included some documentation in that. Also, since I've got this quote, they had sent another thing, and it was five, five percent additional off, so now it's going to be a little bit lower than the $19,500. There's three different options with Parent Square. Based upon what is option, what is available as far as translation services, secure document delivery, the phone calls, text alerts, things like that, we are recommending the middle package, which is called the enhanced, or the Engage Premium. And then we're going to ask you all to approve adding the virtual phone. And so with the virtual phone versus teachers having to use their own phone numbers and things like that, once they have the Parent Square app, and it's a snow day, it's NTI day, they can call parents and guardians through that app with that phone number without everybody having to have their phone number out everywhere, and, and just kind of keep that separate from our, from people. So we'd really like to appreciate that option with that. If we just the Engage Premium with the virtual phone, it's $7.65 a student. Engage Premium by itself without the phone is $6.50 a student, and we're looking at approximately a little over 3,000 students. So they said, well, I could figure it at 3,000, the company did, for each of those. So we're looking at 22,950, and then I think that if they sent me back revised, it was like 19,000 and something since I, since I did this quote with that. So with Senate Bill 181, this is the key thing, you have to ask yourself is what, what the communication that I'm going to have with a student, is it traceable? Can someone see? So it has to be even one step further with Parent Square, parents, if I'm a teacher and Mr. Zackoaks is my student, and he has messaged me and I've messaged him back, Bobby and Cherry could log in and read our messages back and forth, okay? The only way, exception to that, is a waiver signed, and it affords a communication outside of a traceable communication system. Our district email also meets that, which is a state email, because even if someone deletes a message, it's still retained, and, and they can't delete it, delete it, delete it. Even if deleting it from the inbox of our state email system, it's really not gone. So we could retrieve that if a parent so needed to. So the other way around that is, is a waiver. And so a waiver would be necessary, literally as the law is written, and Mr. Hoover, you can chime in anytime. But if I have a church group, and I have students in my church group, I'm a school employee, it applies to me still. So we think this bill will be fixed and addressed better in the 2026 session, but as the law is written, for me to communicate with that student that's in my church youth group, or the kid across the yard that mows the yard, across the lawn, street that mows the yard for me, or a, my niece or nephew in school, the parent or guardian has to sign that waiver to, to be able to communicate outside of the traceable communication system. So, Ms. Hoover and I talked about this on the radio Friday, excellent intent of the bill, great intent, we all support the intent of it, and we all know the intent of it, right? It's, it's to keep inappropriate communication with adults and students, it's to stop that. But there's a lot of implications with the bill. I mean, a teacher was even talking to me today, what if her child drives, and they're out, and her phone is dead, and they've got a flat tire, you mean to tell me, she wasn't addressing to me, but she was just having scenarios, you mean to tell me that my child's friend could not call me on that phone number? Or if my friend, my daughter was sick, and all those different situations? So I called the teacher and I said, I said, I'm glad I'm not really, you're not really upset, because it was a, she said, I'm, you know, preaching to the choir. But there's all of these different scenarios that we really, really have to be cognizant of, because the discipline that has to happen is set out by, by statute. So I'll just kind of go through a little bit of that, because I think it's important for the, for the public to realize. Within the first 10 days of school, we will send out the notice to the parents and guardians on the system, how they use it, and how they can track it, how they can log in and see the communication that's taking place. That's in the law. The principle of each public school is to provide parents written or electronic notification within the first 10 days of school each, each year of electronic school notification and communication program designated within the traceable communication system. The notification shall include instructions for parents to access and review communications sent through electronic school notification and communication program. One thing before I forget that will help mitigate this cost a little bit, we can do away with our school messenger platform, because this does all of that. It can do the phone calls and emails and stuff like that.
Parent Square.
Yes, Parent Square can. So a question says, does SB, Senate Bill 181 require school boards to adopt the use of a singular mode of communication for authorized student communications? No, you all could, you could authorize APIDIGY, that's another one that some school districts are using. Remind is one, but they've been purchased by Parent Square, and they've told us they don't know how long they will keep that system open. So if someone asks you, there could be multiple systems, I don't really know why anybody would want to try to manage multiple systems, you know? So I don't, I don't recommend that. It says, what qualifies as a traceable communication program or platform? The law requires the local school board to approve programs or platforms that trace all communications sent to or by a student, and that provide parents and guardians an opportunity to access and review all communications. Many types of tools can, can, can define that. It also notes electronic communication is not defined in the law, but notes that other KRS does define it. They do define family member though, which is mother, father, brother, sister, grandparents. Oddly enough, Ms. Hoover and I talked about, the stepparents are not included in that. Nieces and nephews are not included in that. And so I had a, I had a parent, her husband teaches for us, they have children together, and then they also have some stepchildren, she said, I don't want him to mess anything up, you know, I need that waiver form. I said, well, the board has to review it first, all those types of things. So there's a lot. So who is prohibited from communicating electronically with students outside of the district's approved traceable communication system? So who does this apply to, is this question? The law defines school district employee or volunteer as a school administrator, classified or certified employee of a school district, a school volunteer, non-faculty coach or assistant coach, student teacher, or a sponsor of an extracurricular program or activity. This definition likely also includes substitutes in virtually every type of volunteer, from classroom volunteer, volunteer to extracurricular volunteers to chaperones.
It applies to everyone except U5.
That's about the truth.
Well, that's crazy.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
No problem, he's got too much in him.
Anybody employed, and then they pointed out on this one, of substitute, I've already told substitutes, some of them have asked me, that they're employees of the school district, it implies. And so the, there's, no, go ahead.
Even if they're hired as a substitute bus driver or a substitute aide, any of those, and maybe they've not even worked today, once they're hired in that substitute role, it still, it still applies.
They are an employee. And again, it defines parent, brother, sister, son, daughter, uncle, aunt, and grandparents and legal guardians as exceptions to this rule. That's the only exception to this rule unless there are waivers signed with, with a specific form.
Would you just clarify, I apologize, would you just clarify that, because I'm reading the same thing, aunt and uncle, so nieces and nephews would be okay then, correct? It's saying if you're an aunt or uncle, you could text your niece or nephew?
That's another question, because what if the employee is a niece or the employee is a nephew?
See, that's.
So that's another discrepancy that it's not covering. I think it's right if the employee is an uncle or aunt.
Right. I don't think if it's reverse, it doesn't apply.
But if the employee is a niece or a nephew, then it applies, and they can, I think that's right, but that's another area.
There's, there's so many. So on the written consent part, the bill allows a parent or legal guardian to submit written consent for a designated employee or volunteer to communicate with his or her student outside of the traceable communication system. It's not one blanket form. For instance, a parent can't sign a form and say, John Doe can, can, can communicate outside of the system with any school employee, or all the baseball coaches, or all of the football coaches. It has to be individual specific with that.
Who retains those waivers?
The school principals, keep track of that. We're going to have another mechanism.
Yeah, we don't have to be all out.
Control, we're not controlled, but just knowledge of who, who's done them or not.
And it's every year.
Would that be a treasure on treatable speech?
That has been brought up by some folks.
Well, that's, that's, some of government control.
Especially, I, I get the school part, you know, I get the school part, but it's going to be problematic for those things outside of school. For instance, you know, like I said, the, the employee that has the kid across the street that mows their lawn, nothing to do with school, you know, but they're an employee, and that kid that mows is a student. Or the church youth groups and all those things like that. Or we have employees that have travel ball, that's not anything affiliated with school, but they have students on there, and they're school employees. It's like Mr. It's like Mr. Hoover said Friday, the implications are far on this bill. Yeah.
Even if you're a volunteer, you know, you go with your third grade daughter's class on a field trip, that would apply under the literal reading of the language.
Yep.
But now who's going to report that?
Well, no, you go ahead.
Well, I mean, obviously anybody could report it. And the problem with certified employees, if somebody reports it, or if they violate it, even as innocent and unintentional as possible, if it's a violation, it's not something that Mr. Ford can just handle. It has to automatically go to the Educational Professional Standards Board.
Oh, my goodness.
For a certified employee.
Automatic.
My gosh, you don't have to have.
They'll get tired of that.
They'll get tired of that.
Yeah.
They don't have people, the process stuff as it is, I mean, they really don't.
They'll have to hire some.
Again, all good intent, but it's just, it's just far. But to follow through on the reporting part, who reports it or things like that, the example is given, what about instances of which an employee or volunteer serves in a capacity outside of school that merits communication with a student, such as a youth minister, piano teacher, neighbor, et cetera, where he or she be required to restrict all electronic communications with the student to those within the traceable communication system, even in instances where the communications are not school-related. As written, that's the key to all of this, as written, the bill captures all communication between any student and employee or volunteer in any setting, under all circumstances, only exception of for close family. Goes back to what Mr. Murray just said of freedom of speech issues. Yeah. And this is the process if a violation occurs. If a district employee or volunteer is aware of alleged unauthorized electronic communication between a district employee or volunteer and a student, he or she shail, so when the law is written with the word shail, we talk about that a lot, it's a requirement, immediately notify the supervising principal. If the allegation is against the principal, the notification shall be made to the superintendent. If the allegation is against the superintendent, the notification can be made to the school board chair. The district must then notify the parents of each student who is alleged party to the unauthorized communication. The district must also investigate the allegation and respond accordingly. So.
So if a teacher says, I sent Johnny a text message that he doesn't need to worry about that test tomorrow, you know, and I probably shouldn't have done that, but I did, and that teacher tells another certified teacher?
They're bound to.
They are bound to report it and failure to do so could subject them to a certified letter for EPSB.
Yep, that's 100% accurate, absolutely.
What would be wrong with sending this, you don't have to worry about this? I mean, come on now.
It would be innocuous. There's no issue with it, it's just as the law is written, it forbids that communication.
Stupid. Right for his mission and other people's business.
But we hope that when the session reconvenes in January, that there could be some swift action on, this is the topic across the state. And every, you know, on NTI days, Mr. Murray, like we use Google Classroom, well, there's a lot of those features now that are not in line with this traceable communication that will change the Google platform as we know it, and a lot of those different things. There's programs our teachers use, especially in some of the coding classes, to where if the teacher, if the students have an issue within the program, they can message the teacher and they see a screenshot so they can help them work through the code issue, but that's no longer traceable.
Or if they just got home, used the cell phone calling, there wouldn't be no record of it.
Well, that's the issue too, it has to be traceable.
They wouldn't be nothing against it, but there wouldn't be no proof on it either way.
Well, there wouldn't be proof.
So no way to know it.
Yeah, I know, it's rough. It's rough. So the disciplinary steps are classified employees who are found to violate this policy will be subject to the existing disciplinary policies and according to our classified policies that align with Carrier Act 161.011. Certified employees who are found to violate this policy must be reported to the Education Professional Standards Board. It's like Mr. Hoover said, even before you find out the reason, if they're guilty or not, you report the allegation to the standards board and then we have to promptly investigate the allegations and take appropriate disciplinary action, which the law does not specify what that is, what the disciplinary action is.
But the thing is for Mr. Ford, he has no discretion.
Yes.
If somebody even calls him and said, Mr. Ford, I accidentally sent my nephew a text message about coming over this afternoon to finish mowing the yard, then he has to.
What would be wrong with that?
Against that law.
There shouldn't be anything against that law. He has to report it to the Professional Standards Board.
As the law is written.
As it's written right now, that's why they're.
It's pretty stupid, it sounded like they asked him for another LA right, come on here.
Volunteers, if they mess up, they're forever, as the law is written, it's not like they're, they can't come back for six weeks or six months or a year, they're forever prohibited.
Ban.
They're banned until, because there's no timeline.
They didn't write it to go back on it, they only voted to approve on it or go further in demand.
So again, I've reached out to legislators and we hope that we can, you know, get some, get some things fixed with this bill going forward. And I've sent this guy some things too with that. But there's a lot, and it's causing a lot of concerns and worry with their faculty and staff, because ultimately, somebody is going to mess up. You know, it could be a coach and the student texts them and says, hey, red or blue jersey today?
Right.
And they say, we're wearing blue. Bang. You know, that's.
Crazy.
So let me just read the, just go over just a little bit on the waiver form. I don't want to take a lot of time with this, but it's important. On the waiver form, it meets the definition that's required in the law for the waiver. So a parent may authorize a designated district employee or volunteer. Here's a good example of a waiver for me personally. I take Kobe and one of his friends to Disney or Universal. To think that I wouldn't put them together in a group, so when they're outside the hotel and I say, it's, you all said you was going to be gone 15 minutes, it's 20, is crazy to think that I wouldn't do that, you know, that I wouldn't text them. So I would have his friends, guardians to sign this waiver form. Says a parent may authorize a designated district employee or volunteer who is not a family member to communicate electronically with his or her child outside of the traceable communication system. A completed form for each designated district employee or volunteer shall be filed with the administrative office of the student's school prior to any outside electronic communication being sent and may be revoked by a parent at any time. So it lists the name of the student, it says, I hereby consent authorize the following to communicate with my child outside the traceable communication system, name of employer or volunteer, reason for the communication, is the parent to be included in all communications. So it could be the parent says, yeah, I'm okay with the teacher or coach or whomever communicating outside of Parent Square with my child, but when they text them, I want to be on every text also. They may say that. If they do, there's an option for that. And then you can also put an expiration date on this. And then there's also a part that says, my consent does not authorize a district employee or volunteer to engage in inappropriate or sexual electronic communication with my student or be used as a basis of a defense for a district employee or volunteer that engages inappropriate, in inappropriate or sexual electronic communication. And they sign off on it and then the, any electronic communication with a student outside of traceable shall comply with that and then the employee signs off on it and then we have to have a receipt date. So we will have a lot of those forms, because we have so many of our faculty and staff that are involved in outside school activities. I mean, think of your church, Mr. Selby, and all the school employees that are so active with youth. And they can't, they shouldn't be using Parent Square, because it's a school district resource for an outside school activity either, right, Mr. Hoover? So it needs to be the waiver, you know, that needs to be signed. But I will say this also, I don't want waivers signed when Parent Square would do the job. For instance, once it's up and running, our coaches, our teachers, everybody, I think will be very pleased with Parent Square and we can make that work very well for school legitimate issues. It's a mess, Mr. Murray.
There'll be, there will be a lot of.
It'll get worse. People will challenge.
They will.
They will.
They will. I'll look for it. Mr. Hoover, don't you look for it?
When I'm in the heat of your two.
Yeah, I think it will challenge. The problem is, you'll never get a result from a court, a final court, prior to January, so hopefully the legislature will make the necessary changes next session.
This could be something that we start working with legislators now and they do emergency clause and do it early in the session.
They could.
That's an option.
But it's still going to be in effect from.
It's effective, 27th.
27th until whenever.
Till Everett's fixed.
Till they do something.
Yes.
So we've got to deal with it.
Yes. Again, good intent.
As I mentioned to Mr. Ford and he had no comment, I get that, but at the end of the day, on stuff like this, there's somebody waiting to make a whole lot of money. Somebody's going to make a whole lot of money until the legislature makes the change.
Exactly. They already had this figured out.
Well, you have to carry it out, it's the law.
I didn't mean to change to the courses, I mean, people make their personal changes, they challenge themselves personally. I didn't mean to challenge in court, you know that's going to happen, but I like the people to stand up and fight it themselves.
I look for, you know, a teacher or an employee to accidentally mess up and then start a chain of events. But again, I'm thankful that it doesn't specify what the discipline has to be.
But then again, why would you even want to be a teacher if you can't speak to your kids?
No.
I look for some loose loyalty. Yeah, we will have shortage. Who'd want to go through that mess?
I wouldn't.
I've seen work at Menor's.
So going back to the staff note, and again, I noted at the very beginning that this is, I added the email on this. So I recommend that Russell County schools use Parent Square and district email as the district's traceable communication system, because you all have to approve what our system is, what we'll be utilizing.
Well, we have to do something right now.
Oh, we do, we do.
What if we don't do something? What's the?
Penalty?
Yeah.
We need to have no way to communicate.
Nobody has to do it.
They can't communicate at all.
It says, if you're going to communicate, you have to use an approved traceable device.
Communication system.
I mean, you have to communicate.
If we don't approve a traceable device, they can't communicate at all.
There's nothing, I mean, there's, and coaches are sweating right now, and we have some teachers that are getting ready to go to the national competitions. You know, they'll have to do waivers, because this won't be up and running before they leave. And so we'll get waivers and make that work for them. But just some features I will notice, so we'll do a lot of education for our parents and stuff, but, so school messenger will fade away, they'll help offset this cost, but notifications and urgent alerts, you know, this winter coming up, it will be through Parent Square, it won't be through school messenger anymore if we have to close, call off school because of snow. There's social and website sharing, we can also migrate our website to this, that would save costs. Two-way SMS texting, app and web messaging, email replies, you can have newsletters sent out with our schools and teachers can do a newsletter with that. If somebody's going to have something they need volunteers from, they could send out a little thing and it can take volunteering, signups, things like that. On the admin oversight for us, we have analytics and reporting, 100% contactability tools, I mean, we can trace everything. Our SIS, that's our student information system integration, that's Infinite Campus, they will talk and update, I say talk, but it connects with Infinite Campus, and then we can custom roles and permissions, online forms and surveys, digital permission slip signatures, which goes along well with the new board policy, which goes along with the state law that you can accept electronic signatures. So there are some other things that will be good in the use of Parent Square. It's not new, there's school districts that already utilize it. But this bill's a lot, I cannot, I cannot overstate that this bill is a lot. Same thing with House Bill 208 and the restrictions on social media, limiting access to cellphones and things like that at school. But 181 is Agenda Item 10, so again, I recommend that the Russell County schools use Parent Square and district email as the district's traceable communication systems. And then we will work with the company on the rollout of everything, because it will, it will quote, "talk" to our student information system and link behind the scenes to bring in students and classes and all those types of things like that.
Still, you can still use like the radio, that's not many.
Oh, no, no, that's fine, yeah, yeah, that's just a one-way type of thing, yeah.
Well, I'll make love, because we have to have something.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
Who sponsored this bill?
I can't remember. Yeah.
Who sponsored it?
Senator Tishman.
I couldn't remember.
Dishman?
Tishman.
Well, he's got a lot on his mind, ain't he?
Where's he from?
It's a she.
Where's she from?
Uh, Lawrenceburg area, I think.
Anderson County.
Got kids in school or not?
She is one of the top homeschool proponents.
Of course.
Okay.
There's the answer to the whole question.
You ask, is what I told you.
Appreciate the answer.
He said he appreciates the answer.
I think I'm going to leave.
Now, understand, Ms.
And I'll do a plug for Friday too, because Mr. Hoover's invited me on All Things Russell Friday to talk about Senate Bill 181. Enjoyed being with him last Friday and had people texting me after that, so, even though it was me, they didn't shut off the radio.
Well, I was confused, Dr. I listened to it. I ain't got to that now.
We'll change the subject.
We'll change the subject.
Next item of the agenda is staffing, English learning program. English learning program.
We have talked about this a lot, we currently, they're staffed as follows. So we have three instructional assistants in the program and two teachers. Both teachers hold an endorsement for teaching English as a second language all grades, meaning that they're certified by the Education Professional Standards Board, they hold a teaching degree, and then they have that endorsement to be a teacher of students that are not native to English, that's what it typically means. You all know, we've talked about this for a number of years, it's, the demands are great for our regular education teachers, our admin staff. Ms. Reed, I could talk about testing and all the requirements, but it's tough. Co-teaching, English language instruction for multi-age, multi-level classrooms, the assessment, translation services, enrollment assistance, et cetera. And I've got a highlight here of the current enrollment. Russell County High School has 43 students in the English learner program. Russell County Middle School has 24. Russell Springs Elementary School has 81. James Allen Elementary School has 18, and Salem Elementary School has 19. So we have 185 students across five schools and we have two certified teachers and three instructional assistants. So the bulk of, let me be clear with this, the bulk of the students' instruction happens in the regular classroom. And we want that, because of English immersion, right, of sitting in there. But just the assistance to help them learn English as a second language is great. So with that and using Title Funds, we are asking for an additional teacher within the English learner program and it be paid for with Title I funds. And so Ms. Jamie Sheeran, she would be here tonight if she could, but she wasn't able to attend. And then she'll work that with the current staff and enrollment numbers to prioritize the teachers being out with the instructional assistants at the schools. Because of Russell Springs need, obviously, there's one instructional assistant that stays there all the time and then the rest of them, they're just split and they spend their time out among the schools. So again, it is allowable expenditure under Title I and that's how we would fund that with federal dollars with that.
Do we have somebody to do that?
I'm not currently aware of anybody that has that certification, but there's means to go back and get it. If I'm a certified teacher, I can go back and get that certification. And you don't have to be bilingual to do that. You don't have to be, teach, you know, to know Spanish, to be an English as a second language, because it's about teaching them English. Yeah. So, but you do have to have that endorsement. But there is an opportunity for someone that doesn't even have the endorsement, but they have a, they're fully certified teacher, to be enrolled into a program and to get completion of the program. be enrolled into a program and to get completion of the program, you know, to do that. And all of our universities, Campbellsville, EKU, Western, yeah, okay, they all offer that with that.
I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion to that?
Yes.
That's what I'll do. I'd like to watch that.
Second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Well, we appreciate that and, and like I said, Ms. Rita can really attest to the need is, is, is great.
Next item is 2025, 2026, district funding assurances.
And what we just did is a good example of what we're talking about here on the funding assurances. And I know you all have seen these every single year. It's a, it's a lengthy document that we have to literally go through there and that we're going to abide by these rules that are associated with all the federal dollars, you know. Here's a, here's a real simple example. We would not take federal dollars and pay the electric bill. We wouldn't take federal dollars and, you know, you know, do things that are not allowable. And then all the reporting requirements that are associated with that and then we send in a, a statement of assurance that goes along with that. I'll read that. At Superintendent Russell County Public School, oh, I'm sorry, I pulled the open on that, but it's the same language. I declare that all the schools in our district, including private schools, receiving funding from our district are in compliance with the assurances listed in the assurance document, meaning that, again, we don't spend federal dollars outside of what they're not allowable to be spent. And again, that's something you all see each and every year. We have to do that. So, I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education approve the 2025, 2026, it's the fiscal year 26, district funding assurances as presented.
Motion.
Motion.
Second, Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is fidelity performance bonds and trade.
So, per KRS 160 dot five six zero and Administrative Regulation 702 KAR three colon zero eight zero, it is the duty of each local Board of Education to bond its treasurer and any other school employee who is responsible for Board of Education funds. Bonds are attached for your review and approval, which, again, this is something that you all see each, this time of year, each year in anticipation for the new year that officially starts on July one and this is bonding for Ms. Carnes and, and Ms. Boland. I recommend approval of the performance bonds for the 2002, 2025, 2026 school year.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Ms. Murray?
No. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Everything's over here. Everything's gone.
Item fourteen.
Okay, this is the one I referenced at the very start of the meeting to where, discuss our renewal for our, really all of our insurance except for workers' comp. It's our property, our general liability, our fleet insurance, all of that. And we have, we have our policy renewal premium from Liberty Mutual. I'll have you all some cost comparisons there. We have just today been able to secure another quote from another company and instead of acting on this today, I would like Ms. Carnes and I to have some more time to review that information. We had a meeting with them today, but we just really want that compared and have time to go over it all and we can bring this back to you all. And we've done it at the last minute before at the June 30th board meeting and we can bring back this action item for you all again at the June 30th board meeting to make a decision then. So, it would be my recommendation, Mr. Kazook, at this time, just to have no, no action on, on this, on this item. Yep. And have some other options at the next board meeting.
I'm just losing everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next item, workers' compensation insurance for school year 2025, 2026.
Okay, so the attached quote from Houston Insurance Group is for Russell County schools to continue with what we call KIMI for short, which is the Kentucky employees, employers' mutual insurance for workers' compensation for school year 2025, 2026 with an estimated premium of seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. I noted that's an increase of four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-one cents from the 2024, 25 school year and the increase from fiscal year 24 to fiscal year 25 was two thousand, two thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. So, we're looking at a little over seven thousand dollars between the two fiscal years that our workers' comp insurances went up. I would like the opportunity to just compliment our faculty and staff and administration on having a low level of, of claims. A lot of workplace accidents happen because of employees. That's just, that's just honest. That's just because people do things that we shouldn't do, we make bad decisions, we stand where we shouldn't or, you know, there's water on the floor and I go running instead of, you know, all different types of things. And then there's sometimes accidents just clearly happen, you know, it's nobody's fault. But we do have what's good, what's called a, a good experience mod factor or what's called your mod rate. It did go up a little bit from the previous school year as point sixty-three, but for this coming up school year, it is point seventy-six, which is still really, really, there's a lot of school districts that would love to have that, what we call mod rate on that. So, again, I appreciate our employees on having good, safe environments. There's not been anything real out of the norm, has there, Ms. Carnes, of just a lot of the kind of run-of-the-mill type of things that happen in workplace. So, again, I, I appreciate that. So, I recommend that the Russell County schools continue using Houston's Insurance Group for Kentucky employers' mutual insurance or KIMI for workers' compensation insurance for school year 2025 to 2026.
Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Selby?
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
This is a slowest thing.
Next item is Russell County Schools Top Trauma Informed Approach Plan.
I should have looked up how many years this has been required, but it's part of, it's really, we call it the Trauma Informed Approach Plan, but it really deals really nicely with school safety. And Ms. Amerin, her and Ms. Michaela, our mental health therapist, spent a lot of time and work and effort on revising this plan. You all have to, to, to approve the plan, but Ms. Amerin, would you care to kind of hit some of the highlights?
Honestly, you've given us a little more credit than, than probably we deserve and I'll tell you why. Because there was a new law that went into effect that changed the timeline for this, making it due on July one. You all just approved the updated plan, probably around October or November in the fall. So, the truth is, as we set and poured over it, we didn't have to make a lot of changes. Most of every, well, in fact, everything will continue on. Component four, we reworded just a little bit to, to make it more of a continuing effort that we're doing with restorative practices and discipline policies. But this is essentially the plan that you approved back in October. And at that point, we did a lot of work with school principals and teams and they were highly involved with it. So, it is, it is what it says it is. We are doing these things.
Yeah, it's not just something that's on a shelf.
Right.
And that we do, we do those things. So, I recommend approval of the Trauma Informed Approach Care Plan as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is out of state and or overnight trips.
We have the TSA going competition in Nashville, Tennessee, and that's their national competition. So, we're, again, so proud of that group to be at national competition again, June 27th to July 1. Again, that's a good example of where we'll have to have the waiver in effect as a lot of school districts are because they don't have their things in place. Because you're not going to take a group of high school kids and not be able to communicate with them, you know. So, we can make that work. June 30th to July the 4th, FFA Leadership Training Camp and August 14th to the 15th is the FFA competitions at the Kentucky Center, Kentucky Global, Kentucky Exposition Center in Louisville, Kentucky. I recommend approval of out of state and or overnight trips as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Mr. Selby? No. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I'm just slowing.
It may be the internet.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent evaluation information.
Okay, here are the, the documents that the board has previously used or approved for my evaluation and the blank forms and then at the, give you all time to look over that and then at the June 30th board meeting, we traditionally always do and formalize my evaluation. So, that's just the standard and things I wanted you all to have prior to that.
I thought we didn't do that.
No action.
I thought we didn't do that.
You have to do it every once a year, every year.
I think we have, but we get it.
They do go by, isn't that true?
As you get older, it is. You know, I mean, I'm not old.
Next item on the agenda is personnel reports. David Knoll hired James Elementary School Cook cashier. Barbara Bowen hired Salem Elementary School Cook cashier. April Miles hired Salem Elementary School Cook cashier. Kristy Roy hired Russell County Middle School Cook cashier. Amy Burton hired James Elementary School P-5 teacher. Colton Greider transferred. He was at Jamestown, he's going to Russell Springs Elementary School. Donna Flatt retiring from Russell Springs, a teacher, wish her well. Mr. Josh Root hired Salem Elementary School Health and Physical Education teacher. Adam Cox hired Russell County Middle School Math position. Tricia Simpkins retired, resigned, Russell County High School Night Custodian. Marie Scrubs hired Russell County High School Assistant Principal. Kara Steely hired district-wide special education teacher consultant, primarily there working with a middle and high school. Lindsay Stevens resigned. She was there with the Jamestown and Russell Springs itinerary position. And Julie Guster is transferring from, from Russell Springs Elementary School to the Jamestown and Russell Springs Elementary School itinerary position. That's a split position.
They're out of public comments.
Who's the assistant principal?
I have no idea. How do you bring this up as an example because I don't think we could, we could spend the next year and not come up with all examples, but this affects my family. So, what about retired teachers?
No, they're just current employees.
Okay, that's another one.
Yes, sir.
What if the student initiates?
Then you don't respond.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep.
Or at least by that method.
Right.
My daughter sent a teacher an email. The teacher couldn't respond.